We're here for a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Thank you. Five members are present. Next, we'll go to the invocation. Pastor Tim Brown from First Presbyterian Church. Please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Would you bow with me in prayer? We thank you, Lord, for our civil servants. Thank you for their hard work and for their sacrifice. May you continually bless them. May you generously give to each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people in our county. Give our leaders wisdom so that they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability, and prosperity to our community. May your wisdom produce creative ideas and solutions to problems. May you give sound counsel and give judgment to help in making good decisions. Lord, give your people in our community a spirit of unity so that with one heart and mind you may work together for the good of our city and our county and glorify your name. Lord, our hearts ache for those who have been impacted by senseless violence in this last week. May your peace, which passes all understanding, comfort those who mourn and who hurt. We ask for your protection for those who may be impacted by Hurricane Adelia. We thank you for first responders and skilled workers who sacrificed their safety for today and to serve those who are vulnerable, and we ask that you would be a safeguard to those who safeguard and assist us and others. We ask that you give us your humility, Lord, and let all barriers, walls, strongholds, and divisions that keep us separated from you and one another come down in your name and praise. Amen.
Thank Pastor. Pastor, would you mind leading us in the flag?
Absolutely.
Civil agents, the United States of America, and the entire republic, which sustains, our nation, I think of the physical liberty that has so come along.
All right. Thank you, Pastor. Next up is unscheduled appearances. Madam Clerk, we'll start with any speaker cards and then we'll go to the...
The first speaker is Rosemary Ron.
Morning, ma'am.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Rosemary Ron, Department of Public Health. I just wanted to let you know through our epic surveillance in the past two weeks, we've noted an increase in the COVID-19 cases throughout the county. Kings, Fresno, Madera Hospital area has seen an increase in COVID admits, but overall the admissions remain low. Currently Adventist has six cases, but four are only active in isolation. Our COVID-19 wastewater concentrations in Hanford are higher than they've been since we started testing in February 2023, and the test positivity is 25% higher, highest than it's been since January 2022. EEG five variants make up the highest proportion of cases. Testing is available around the county at various sites through medical providers, and public can also call 211 or go to our website, the list of locations, if they need tests. And the isolation of quarantine rules remain the same. If a person is positive, they should isolate for five days. After five days, a fever-free without use of fever reducers for 24 hours and their return to work wearing a mask for the full 10 days of a positive test. Vaccines, we continue to have the current COVID-19 vaccines available. However, we should be receiving our flu vaccine allocation this week or next. We'll also have an RSV vaccine. And currently, in mid-September, the Food and Drug Administration or the FDA will be making a decision on the emergency youth authorization related to the COVID-19 vaccines and approval of a new product and deauthorization of the current product. So we're sort of in that window where the COVID vaccine you're getting, if you haven't gotten it, you can get it. However, they'll be phasing that out and phasing in a new one. But I just wanted to come before you just to note that I'm sure you've heard about it, but we're seeing a lot more cases in our office and in the county.
Thank you, ma'am. What's our free test supply like? Do we still have?
We still have quite a bit, so if people are interested, obviously go to the website. There's locations and several agencies that can provide them, but we also have some as well.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question. So what about Westbound? I mean, we only have four K groups of COVID that are there watching in hospital, but we got more than that at Westbound.
So actually, currently, we have one confirmed case and one probable case currently.
News said we had five this morning, but...
Oh, really?
Yeah. News always tell.
Like, what I have is, what I know is two. One, one confirmed and one is still...
You made a statement a minute ago in your statement on the COVID was COVID wastewater?
Wastewater, yeah. We're doing, around the state, they're testing the wastewater, like the sewage.
So you check it in the water?
And you can tell if there's COVID or anything else circulating in the community. We don't know who, obviously, so we know it's there.
And you just checked that in the city limit?
Yes.
Want any porter potties?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Anybody else?
The next speaker is Eric Urina.
Chairman, Supervisors, Eric Urina, Director of Finance. I'd like to announce that Department of Finance finally has him as their secretary, as far as I can understand. They've never had him before. So I'm super excited. He's going to be able to help us out a lot, taking care of it and not myself and my staff that think currently doing all these things lately. So I'd like to let them introduce themselves.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Musana Rodriguez. So I've been with the county for about two and a half years, and I'm super excited to be part of the team, so.
Welcome. Where were you at before?
At HSA. So I've been given the opportunity to promote, this is my third time promoting, so I'm excited.
Nice, very nice. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Lynch.
Morning, Chief Lynch.
Members of the board, just wanted to give you a little update on the fire department. We currently have 11 people operating outside the county on wildland fires in Northern California. We have a couple apparatus, OES apparatus, single resource, and our dozer is actually at the Smith River. So we're out taking care of business as usual. As you know, some of the Northern California fires have grown a little bit recently in a few days. They didn't get as much rain as we did up there, so they're having some problems. They're still kind of in drought conditions up there. So we're operating at the Happy Camp Smith River and ahead fires. That's all I have for you. Thank you. Appreciate you.
The next speakers are Aracely Barrios and Yvette Chides Del Rio.
Morning. Morning.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Aracely Barrios. Vivo en Armona. He vivido en Armona durante años. Soy una de las promotoras de Valley Voices. Pero antes de comenzar a trabajar en Valley Voices, fui trabajadora agrícola y del campo durante 28 años. Yo así como muchos en nuestra comunidad coseche la comida de que todos sus familias tienen en su mesa para las comidas. A pesar de vivir en el condado de Quin durante 28 años, esto es solo la segunda vez que asisto a una reunión de junta de supervisores. La semana pasada fui primera vez, no por falta de ganas de participar, sino por la falta de conocimiento y acceso, y hay muchos como yo. Estoy aquí hoy para solicitar amablemente la implementación de servicios de interpretación simultánea en las reuniones de la junta de supervisores de nuestro condado, específicamente diseñados para servir a personas con bajo dominio de idioma de inglés. Como líderes electores de este condado diverso y vibrante en su responsabilidad garantizar que todas las voces sean escuchadas e incluidas en el diálogo cívico. Nuestro condado es el hogar de un rico tapiz de culturas e idiomas e orígenes y estas diversas en una nuestra mayor fortaleza. Sin embargo, también plantea un desafío cuando se trata de garantizar una comunicación y participación efectiva en todos públicos. Como las reuniones de la junta de supervisores, muchos de nuestros compañeros residentes, aunque están ansiosos de participar en discusiones que afectan sus vidas y el futuro de nuestra comunidad, enfrentan barreras debido al idioma limitado de inglés. Al ofrecer servicios de interpretación simultánea, estamos dando un paso significativo hacia la creación de un entorno exclusivo donde todos los miembros de nuestra comunidad pueden participar activamente en el proceso democrático. Esta iniciativa permitirá a las personas que no hablan inglés comprender las discusiones, expresar sus opiniones, y hacer contribuciones informadas a las decisiones que dan forma al futuro de nuestro condado. Gracias.
That translates what she said to her. She said, "Good morning. My name is Aracely Barrios. I live in Armona. I have lived in Armona for 28 years. I'm one of the newest promotoras at our community health workers at Valley Voices. But before I began working at Valley Voices, I was a farm market and packing house worker for 28 years. I, as well as many in our community, harvested the food all your families have on your tables. Despite living in Kings County for 28 years, this is only the second time attending a Board of Supervisors meeting. Last week was my first time, not for lack of wanting to participate, but for lack of knowledge and access, and there are many people like me. I'm here to kindly ask for the implementation of simultaneous interpretation services for the second week in a row in our county Board of Supervisors meeting specifically tailored to serve individuals with low proficiency in the English language. As elected leaders of this diverse and vibrant county, it is your responsibility to ensure that all voices are heard and included in the civic dialogue. Our county is home to a rich tapestry of cultures, languages, and backgrounds, and this diversity is one of our greatest strengths. However, it also poses a challenge when it comes to ensuring effective communication and participation in public forums, such as a Board of Supervisors meetings. Many of our fellow residents, while eager to engage in discussions that affect their lives and the future of our community, face barriers due to limited English proficiency. By offering simultaneous interpretation services, we will be taking a significant step forward to creating an inclusive environment where all members of our community can actively participate in the democratic process. This initiative would enable non-English speakers to understand the discussions, express their opinions, and make informed contributions to the decisions that shape our county's future. Thank you."
Thank you.
The next speaker is... The next speaker is Alan Borba.
Morning, sir. Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, and Staff. My name is Alan Borba. I'm the owner, operator of the Selma Flea Market in Selma, which is Fresno County, the Erosus Swamp Meet in Erosi. And two months ago, three, about three months ago, we were approached by the owner or the fairgrounds that they were going to relieve the person of his duties there for what reason, we don't know. Anyhow, they got rid of him. We took it over. And Debbie is, is an employee and an associate of mine. She is running that swamp meet. In the meantime, we operate on Saturday. The old owner operated on Saturday and Sunday. Well, we chose just to do Saturday because Sunday was very light. Well, in the meantime, he has opened a swamp meet at the Fairgrounds in, in Armona. Six miles away.
Theater. Drive-in.
Drive-in theater, yes, drive-in theater. And my concern is, you know, we've been through the permitting process many times and how does someone get a permit to operate in three weeks, four weeks, and able to operate? And that's our, our concern because, you know, naturally, we're trying to make some money for ourselves for the fairgrounds, and now there's direct competition. If it's allowable, that's fine by us, we'll, we'll take on the competition, but this, that's, that's my concern. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Chuck, does that go through your office?
Chuck, any Kings County's dominant agency? Yes, permits for that type of activity, that land activity would go through our department. We have yet to receive an application for that type of activity. We've been made aware of that current operation out there. We have sent investigators out to investigate, and we are working in both components.
The next speaker is Debbie Berdito.
Good morning. I'm Debbie, and I'm the one that runs the Kings County Jail Ground Swamp Meet. My concern is, as Alan said, but the fact that he opens the same time I do, closes the same time I do, it's kind of tough to improve on a place that I put many hours in, and he can open one overnight practically. So it's just the fact that same day, same little town makes it difficult to make any profit or display what we have to offer in the swamp meet, so I appreciate any feedback.
You have food vendors at yours?
Pardon?
You have food vendors?
We have food vendors.
Any good barbecue?
Oh, really good food. Oh, yes, thank you.
Our next speaker is Alia Reyes. I apologize if I said that wrong.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is... I'm here on behalf of Valley Voices as well. I am also a local community health worker. I've actually been a resident of Humbert since Calvani when my family moved from Oxenville. And I only left for four years of school. I went to study over in DC, and now I return to Long Beach at the Bethany. I do want to go to Valley Voices because I really want to work with my community and I have the opportunity to do. So my question is, is there a list of who is on the ARPA committee? Is that list available for the public? And if so, when and where did the ARPA committee meet? Are there any previous notes of these meetings?
Sure. Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have.
All right. Is anyone from the audience like to make an unscheduled appearance? Going once. All right. We'll close it out. Thank you for everyone for your comments today and for your attendance. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Item A, report out a closed session from the regular meeting for August 22, 2023. Council, anything to report?
There's nothing to report.
Thank you. Item B, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting for August 22, 2023. Chair Lantana motion?
There's no question or comment. I'll move approval if presented.
Motion by Verboen. Second by Robinson. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Of the... Item passes four in favor with one extension. Thank you. Consent calendar is pretty long today. All the items are printed on the agenda and been made public. If there are no questions or comments, Chair Lantana motion?
There's no question or comment. I'll move it presented.
Yep, second.
Most Barbara Boom, second by Nevs, Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you. Takes us to regular agenda items. We have a couple. Today, we start with item A, comes from District Attorney's Office. Madam DA, will you be presenting your item?
Good morning, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here today, and I wish you all very well. We are presenting our annual report of military equipment. This is a very similar report that the Sheriff, that the Sheriff's Department had also brought before this work in June. We are to report that we did not purchase any new military equipment, and we have not used any military equipment in the last year, and we haven't identified any military equipment to be purchased.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments for the DA?
If there's no question or comment, I'll move it presented on no purchase.
Motion by Verboen, second by Robinson. Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
All right. Item passes five in favor. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Takes us to item B, comes from the fire department this morning. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman, members, staff. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this item in front of the board. It's been a, a long time coming. This item's been looked at by county council and risk, and what it is, this is an instructional, instructional service agreement with Fresno City College. To simplify, the state local community colleges understands value of daily professional training that we do every day. Regional training centers like West Hill, COS, and President City College, this is state funding based on student power. Law enforcement captain that funds were supported by coast. At some point, a decision was made to offer that path and fire it. The college in S and T Denise instructor collects data on the training hours that we already do and provides, that we already provide, and splits the state funding associated with that, that funding. The caveat is that it's social director who are saying. It's a, I can't remember the exact number. In anticipation of speaking to you, I tried to just get some of the questions you might have about it. And one of the, one of the questions was the expected revenue. The people that I've talked to, Fresno does, that has contact with 12 other agencies, local agencies. And if you look on the back of the the background sheet, you'll see all of the state all the state regulations and stuff that fall under the CIA statement. So what are the expected revenues? Well, the people that I spoke to have some smaller departments, and so it's difficult to know going in, but they had, they had estimate of $12,000 to $17,000 a shift month. And this is, of course, worth telling me this department, and that's, that's an incredible piece. The other question I may have is why Fresno City College and why not see around to West Hill, including our dollars open? And if even matters, they don't have these programs, they have the team. We attempted to try to get these in place. I understand it's a little bit harder than just slapping it together. So I spoke to the dean and spoke to our Fresno D and C representatives over there. And if they ever do forget this program, I would love for, for these visiting and go through local community. So do you have any questions?
Questions on the program, the board? All right. Mr. Felipe, right?
Yes.
All right. All right.
So I'd like to recommend that we improve the instructional service agreement with President City College Fire Department and authorize the chief to assign a deal with President City College Fire.
Thanks for the...
There are no questions. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion for Fagundes, second by Verboen. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Good luck. Thank you. All right. Item C comes from Human Resources Department. Good morning.
Chairman, members of the board, Chairman, Human Resources Director. I'm here to request the Board Supervisors approve the township for compensation defined constitution, administrative expense, reimbursement allowance through their policy. I promise you I'll go try to shorten that title for the administration of the deferred compensation program. The purpose of this policy is to ensure compliance, plan compliance with the Internal Revenue Services and the Department of Labor requirements in the event amounts, for example, our fees charged for the distance are kept in reserve to use for plan-related expenses outside of the current plan year. The deferred compensation oversight committee has identified four reserve areas that the county should plan for in addition to the annual fees reimbursed annually to the human resources department. This reserve policy would add a contingency stabilization to absorb unanticipated expenses. It would also improve the major plan changes and requests that the pole will reserve, which you do a maximum every four years, with the planished in time for the next RFP or expenditure for plan changes approved by the Board of Supervisors, and also the mock IRS compliant audit reserve if the county decides to want to do one of those. The policy will require the committee review and update their policy at least once every four years as necessary and appropriate, and all reserve levels will be reviewed and adopted annually. An account balance in excess of the approved reserve level will be returned to the plan participants at the end of each fiscal year. The draft of policy is attached to agenda items and has been approved by county council and recommended by the deferred compensation oversight committee for approval by the Board of Supervisors. If they're going to set things by attacking this thing.
What do you mean that money's get returned back to the participants?
So a certain portion of our contributions into the deferred comp program is put into reserve policy, and it covers and leads to these things. For example, we attend a national conference. It is used for any kind of administrative cost to my department to basically host the meetings, do those programs. If we don't spend all of the reserve money, we're supposed to return those back to benefit people who are actually participating in the plan. This plan, this reserve policy will put money aside for the things that we have already targeted or identified that we should be doing. So this policy should have been in place, and we haven't had it there. So what it does is that we do an RFP every four years. That costs about $35,000 when we do that. So if we have a reserve, then it makes sure we have the money that we need when we need to do like a mock, enter, mock IR, so mock IRS audit. That's about $20,000. So let's just make sure that that money stays in there, and if anything in excess, goes back to the system.
When it's in the reserve account, is it still active to either grow or define?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, members?
There's no question or comment. I'll approve it presented.
Motion by Verboen. The second by Fagundes.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. You have one more item. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the board. After this personal note, I'm here today to recommend that the board approve the new job specification for the Assistant Sheriff's STC provision and set the salary at range 269, which is eight, 3,741 to 10,355 monthly. In March 2023, the board approved the relation of the Assistant Sheriff position that was only the two different positions. The Assistant Sheriff's STC will be a main management role classification on the sheriff's office that will administer, supervise, and coordinate the day-to-day operations of the assistant positions for the sheriff's office, keeps us of order. This position will be distinguished from the Assistant Sheriff as it will, it will be finer.
Okay.
A standard and change for corrections STC certificate, bill of receipt to bill. There is no fiscal impact as the possible contribution was included in the final fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget, and will be absorbed by the sheriff's office, beginning function to be effective.
Yeah. Any questions or comments from the board?
There are no questions. Move to approval.
Motion by Fagundes. Second by Robinson. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you. Next up comes from administration, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Domingo Cruz, administrative analyst in the administrative office. So this morning, I'm requesting that your board receive a report regarding the local health emergency caused by the floodwater contamination and vector boone analysis. Find that condition of local emergency continue to exist and that the declaration of local health emergency remains in effect. So on March 10, 2023, the County of Kings Emergency Services Director proclaimed a local emergency due to flooding the county, which was ratified by your board on March 14, 2023, and continues in full force and effect. So the Kings County Public Health Officers proclaimed and declared a local health emergency on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, due to the presence of an threat posed by floodwater and potential for increased vector-borne illnesses. So the, your board ratified the public health officers proclamation on June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and renewed the proclamation again on August first, two thousand twenty-three. So the following are the current information and basically the updates. So the water levels have continued to drop in the Tulare Lake Basin since the peak in late May and are expected to continue to fall. The recent tropical storm should have minimal effect on the, on the lake. There's been no large scale die-offs or diseases detected in wildlife. Plans exist, continue testing and monitoring through Ostrovision. So Kings County has reported two instances, uh, instances of West Nile virus. As mentioned by the Director of Public Health this morning, we have one confirmed and one still probable. With forty-seven mosquitoes testing positive for the virus and ongoing abatement absolutes are in progress throughout the counties. So the presence of avian botulism type C has been confirmed in few birds gathered from the Tulare Lake. So this type of botulinum toxin typically doesn't relate to human botulism, which is caused by distinct variants of the toxin. County personnel have been diligently evaluating the ever-evolving conditions and furnishing the community with guidance and avoiding the dangers associated with the floods and vector-borne illness. And plans for cleanup efforts are in progress. So this concludes my presentation, and we have the Public Health Director, Officer Ron. We have Kings County mosquito abatement district managers, Michael and the Emergency Service Director, Abraham Valentia. In the chamber, if you have any questions that I may have to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. I might have a couple. I have a couple. Uh, Mr. Ron? The, I voted yes first time, then I voted no the second time. Is the, just as far as the testing, the actual water, has there been any change? Cause the first time we voted on this, the water was actually clean. And we voted that morning, found out that evening that the water was actually clean and there hadn't been any negative testing as a result of tests in those floodwaters. So has anything changed today?
Currently, the water is what you'd expect in floodwater, the same as most, it's not recreational water. So there is fecal content in there and poliform bacteria, like what you would expect in floodwater. So I would not say it's clean. I wouldn't drink it or be in it. However, it's not toxic or dangerous. So we're monitoring the situation. We're looking at, as things, as time goes on and plant life decays, there's always the potential of things growing. Right now, it seems fine.
And that, and that being said, when we, you said the same thing a couple of months ago, right? That the water's fine. But since then, the, um, you get the L A Times, you get, now you got major publications doing the headlines and saying it's toxic water, which is the, the ag folks in my district. That was their fear from the very first time when we passed it. And, um, and so what they worried about now, it's becoming, um, not that it's secret, everyone knows this lake is out there, but publicly, these votes translate to headlines and the stories that don't help those folks who already have an uphill climb coming out of this, uh, this, this flood event, both fiscally, physically, the, um, with their workers, with their farm workers who hear about the stories and the rumors that, that go around when these publications print these headlines and these stories. So, uh, no big deal, I just want to, but you guys know, it's still gonna be a no vote today. Obviously, you guys do what you.
But it's still floodwaters, you know, it's still, but nothing, nothing changes. It doesn't get any better. And it doesn't get any worse. We just monitor, but it's still floodwaters, so it's all the way off. And we start over with that managed irrigation work. So it's still floodwater. So we still gotta be cautious of that. I know we've had multiple people get ahold of us from the, from the media trying to talk about the bird flu and all the botulism out there. They're just trying to create a story. So I, my advice, we don't talk to them because we still have floodwaters because that lake is dry. And it may not be dry if we haven't rained it some October, like you're saying. So we still need to monitor and be cautious of that and make sure people dissolve their rig reading.
And, um, who's, uh, sorry, West Nile virus season runs through September. And so there is still a lot of mosquito pools out there, as we know, because of floodwaters and sea淡水 water. So we're just monitoring. I agree with you. There's not anything toxic, but we want to be able to monitor and be able to fund anything to do.
Sue Robinson.
How is mosquito abatement applying, uh, kind of full of the picture? Are they doing that by aircraft or how was that?
Come on, come on up, sir. And that way you can introduce yourself.
It's such a large area this time.
Please introduce yourself for the folks online.
Uh, yeah. My name is Michael Kavanaugh, the district manager for the Kings and Steel Abatement District. Your, your question about how do we apply pesticides for mosquito control towards the lake bottom? Yeah. Okay. So for our, our district, the lake bottom is outside of our district boundaries. And the section that is in Kings County isn't necessarily producing a lot of mosquitoes. We're just treating around the perimeter mainly by hand. I want, I just want to point out that the flood event that we're dealing with, and I've said this repeatedly to the media, and like you said, they don't all look report by detail, is the fact that we, we don't, we're dealing with three hundred percent of like our normal snowpack. And every farmer has excess water. They would be asked to take more water. We have flooded areas all over the county that we're treating that aren't associated with the lake bottom. I know the lake bottom is obviously the thing that gets all the attention because of the disastrous outcome that could have occurred if it wasn't handled properly from where it is, anybody can fall. But from a mosquito control standpoint, we're dealing with ramifications of the snowpack in general all over the district. So we, um, by ground, by air, by hand, by all of our other equipment, quads and flurries and all that kind of stuff. While we're treating mosquitoes all over the county. So we have several large areas that actually the state has taken over and is funding. The N R C S property up by N S Moore is around about eight hundred acres. And then we have over a thousand acres near, um, corphents that were actively straying too. And the state is doing that by air and flurrying. They're funding this stuff.
As a grower, they're very diligent. If you don't do much standing water properly, they will come out, they will contact you, they will give you a bill if you get out of control. Speaking on behalf of someone I know.
Oh, Mr. Kavanaugh, before you leave, I do want to say thank you. I know you said you're working with the state on the area applications. But when you guys sprayed over the city of Corcoran and probably sprayed over other communities in Kings County, but we saw the change from, I don't think I've had a mosquito bite since then, but it was bad. And then I think you guys sprayed two days before the Fourth of July or the day before. But, um, being it, at least it made it outside a little bit more pleasant.
Yeah, we, we, we did notice a significant drop off in population after the application of the.
Are you able to say if, on any, uh, positive testing on West Nile virus, if those are in the north part of the county? Or last I heard, none of that came out of the south part of the county.
Specific locations are not revealed to the district. We just know that there's basically in that.
Got it.
The mosquito samples that we are collecting that are testing positive are essentially throughout the county. Or some are concentrated in different areas of that. That's associated with where we're trapping, not necessarily where the virus is.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Thanks, sir. Morning, Mr. Valencia.
Abraham Valencia, O E S manager from Kings County. Um, I just wanted to add that, uh, again, the, the emergency declaration, the public health emergency declaration is not just for the Lake Bottom, it's for the entire town. And as Michael stressed, the whole county needs attention. We don't have funds to keep our mosquitoes. You know, we had a lot of horses, for example, ranches that have, you know, horses and they're, they're, they're concerned. And so what that allows us to do is get more funding from the state. Those area applications that, that you mentioned, sir, they cost millions. And because we have that public health order, we didn't have to prepare anything. The state took, they get in and they're gonna request even more assistance. But more so now than ever, this public health emergency should be getting more attention because as the water is receding, you know, there, 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 the water has been standing for a long time. Now there's the weather, vegetation is starting to grow in certain areas. And so those pay areas are concerned that we need to monitor. And a, as the water recedes, also roadways are gonna start appearing. And, you know, we're working with the sheriffs, with public works, looking to open the roads as soon as possible, which means that there's probably gonna be more traffic in that area. And so i- if we don't extend this public health emergencies, we could also allude to, uh, people start using it for recreation. So there, there's a lot of factors that are involved. So in our messaging though, we have been clear that at the time, there isn't anything airborne or anything of that nature that could affect farm workers or the, or the ranchers. But we do need it for other things like testing the water, mosquito abatement, and people that.
Maybe we could, uh, Sue, go ahead, Sue.
So thank you for that. And it means a lot. Like I said earlier, it's flooded, it's still flooded. It, there's no new water coming in, but we still have to deal with the fact that the water is still here. And tell them that will always be floodwater. Also, I have a question when it comes to transportation throughout the area. We have a bridge down on, on Hampton, uh, Houston. And I think, does this have anything to do with keeping the funds for that for FEMA?
No, this is more.
It's more for health?
Public health.
Okay. And then, you know, we have also on a different note, we have, uh, you know, people being affected by road closure that farm both sides. You know, for the getting the fruit, the horn travels from one side to the other, going eight miles out of the way, you have to go around that bridge. And there's no, you know, or can you check if there's any funding to offset their cost? Cause someone has to pay for the fuel and the transportation to get that product across the other side. And some of the workers that have to go work, have to travel eight miles out of the way. So I know when I drove truck for a few years, it's all run for the P U C and we have to follow God on P U C. So I don't know if it changes because now we have lost some of our arterial arteries to our county. So if you could check on that, uh, we have a lot of complaints with the private truck drivers, have to go multiple miles out of the way to get the water from one side to the other.
Yeah, we're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Abraham, are you, uh, when you're out there on the fan boat, are, is there a lot of mosquitoes still? Are?
Not, not the, uh, not the ones that are deceased, but there's a lot of that. It was that are known. None of the ones that are.
You're not seeing a lot of large, like larvae? Okay.
Right now. But, you know, continuing that public, public citizen, the position to be out there.
And they're, they're moving that water out, right?
Well, that.
The lake bottom is, they're moving the water out. So it's, it's moving water, standing water gives them trouble.
Well, maybe in our press release, uh, P I O could, uh, add a sentence or two to go out of its way to say, maybe even though if this action passes here today, that, um, it doesn't mean there's toxic, um, elements in the water to, just to help avoid a little bit of, um, the drama stories that come with the action today. All right. If there's no question or comment, I'll move approval. Let's revisit it. Most Barbara Boom.
Nev's second.
Second by Nev's, Madam Clerk.
Joe Nev's?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Item passes four in favor with one in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
They can't spray anywhere near Valley's house.
Yeah.
Just got the, got the funding.
I knew it was gonna pass. It passed four in my mind. Okay, the ten a m, there's three public hearings. So we have fifteen minutes. C L Martinez, would you rather go close session or just try and kill time with board member announcement?
We could do board member now.
Okay. So Nev's, are you ready?
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Continue to watch the Tulare Lake water receipt. Uh, the water is kind of clean looking out there. So, um, as the days get shorter and the nights get longer, it's gonna continue to, uh, to evolve. So we'll continue to watch that. Uh, at the LAPCO meeting on Wednesday, uh, August twenty-third, we discussed the, uh, Hamford Reorganization, one sixty that created a few questions that raised at the public hearing. As a result, we tabled that action and then we'll come back in September. The board also reviewed, uh, reviewed the memorandum of understanding with the city of Hamford. That will come to the Board of Supervisors for comments and adoption, uh, at a later date, right Chuck? Sometimes. The, uh, other, uh, Hamford Annexation, one fifty-nine, uh, was reviewed, held a public hearing and was adopted. There were some concerns about truck traffic, uh, railroad noise and traffic congestion. And they were all, uh, noted as activities that are currently being, uh, ongoing in the area. We also approved, uh, the Cal LAPCO, uh, conference attendance and Chuck Kenny is the voting delegate. So we'll see if we get a postcard from Monterey when he goes to that, uh, conference. At the CART meeting, uh, we approved the amendment, uh, for the, uh, construction management contract. Due to some questions that were raised, uh, by interested parties in bidding for the project, twenty-five thousand dollar increase, uh, for the, uh, construction management. We also approved the transit system applying for, uh, a permit or a license with the Department of Health Care Services and Medi-Cal Transportation Services. It'll take a while, uh, to get that through, but we'll, uh, continue to work through that. Eric's still here, and we discussed having Heather Porter, um, being nominated to serve on the King County Oversight Committee. She comes, uh, very, very, uh, well, uh, representative of the, uh, special districts. And her knowledge and, and wisdom will be totally helpful. The board also reviewed, uh, some new funding, uh, uh, sources of transits that are coming through the state. And those guidelines will be released the end of September. So hopefully we'll be successful in, in giving some more, uh, funding for that project. At the K CAC meeting also held on that Wednesday, uh, board approved the resolution adopting the State of Good Repair Program. These funds are gonna be directed at both the new transit station in Hamford, as well as improvements to the Corcoran Depot parking lot, parking blocks, and install fencing to the back part of that building. We also, uh, received the compliance audits, um, and, uh, approved the release of funds to the city of Corcoran. That evening, gathered at the, uh, American Post, uh, uh, one hundred at the Veteran Services, uh, uh, building in Lemoore and discussed the two thousand twenty-three Veterans Day Parade coming up, uh, which will be on Saturday, November eleventh, um, in, in downtown Lemoore. Then on Thursday, uh, attended the, uh, Kings Tulare Master Plan for A G meeting. That, uh, report will be released on October nineteenth in Visalia. Hopefully you'll be getting, uh, invitations for that. Uh, and that'll be in the morning. Kathy and I also attended the ribbon cutting at Stratford School for the upgrades to the library features lounge and improvements around campus. The Heart of America Foundation works with, um, and in this case, happened to be working with the solar developers, um, in that, in that Stratford area. That, and, uh, so it was through their creative support and, uh, creating better learning environments in the community. Uh, so that really helps. Just for the, just for the sake of it, you know, a hundred years ago in nineteen twenty-three, my grandfather would have been attending the one-room schoolhouse that stood, um, a little bit south of the current playground. Eighty years ago, my dad would have been in school at nineteen forty-three if he'd have went to school that day. And they would have been in the bricks, uh, classrooms that stood along Empire. Sixty years ago, Kathy and I would have been walking the hallways, uh, in the, in that campus that was just a couple of years old. It was, it was, uh, I'm on board in nineteen sixty. So, uh, we were there, one of the, one of the first few classes that walked through that. And then our kids, Justin and Heather, went through forty years ago in, in nineteen eighty-three. Attended, uh, learned in the same classrooms and had some of the same, same features. So, um, overall, uh, it was a great project. I got to go to the library. When I was in school, I never went to the library, knew where the cafeteria was, but the library was a little foreign uh, until the principal once hit me in there and I have to copy dictionary pages or something. I still can't read and still can't pronounce. But I have, uh, a whole notebook of, uh, of, uh, dictionary pages. But I certainly want to thank, uh, Heart of America Foundation, as well as the solar developers, that, that funded those improvements at, at the Stratford campus. Then on Thursday, announced football, uh, at, uh, Lemoore High, uh, for the freshman team, and then came back on Friday, uh, for the Mount Whitney. That, Mount Whitney was on Thursday. Mount Whitney was on Thursday and uh Washington Union on Friday against JB's and then shot the cannon off in varsity. Um, I want to thank everyone that attended the uh two thousand twenty-three Santa Rosa Rancheria uh powwow. Uh, the grand entry was uh one of the highlights of, of Saturday. And certainly want to thank everyone that's uh, that showed up and uh that was a, 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 a long weekend for the uh. Uh, both the Santa Rosa Rancheria as well as the um, the uh, the palace. Um, then Kathy and I uh went that evening and we were um the wine stewards at the uh, uh Lemoore Lions Brew Fest in Lemoore. Uh, I'm not sure that really counts when you only have three different wines, but.
Did you taste, taste or did you serve?
Oh, no, uh, we served, uh, we weren't, weren't allowed to taste. Um, cause any, if you taste, you gotta spit it out. So yeah, I don't want to spit it out. So. Uh, that's just not sanitary. So um, certainly want to thank Grocery Outlet and Lemoore Lions Club uh for uh. Uh, a, a real fun event. They had uh great, uh, great music, great times. Uh, and it, and it went very, very well. And then yesterday, uh, the Kings County Behavioral Health Meeting, we did have a forum. Uh, we were able to approve the minutes uh that had been hanging around since January. And appointed a new law enforcement representative with Parker from the uh Hamford uh Police Chief being appointed to serve. Uh, we currently have eight uh active board members and five still open positions. Uh, so we are still looking for folks and hopefully we'll get those filled um. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Roger Nevs. She loves.
That was fun last week, so I've gotten too much to report. I attended the fortune celebration in fifth month, didn't attend it. I was there. Uh, I understand they had it from what I can gather, the eighty queens, eight, eighty participants in the parade. And uh, it's not like it used to be, used to last, but four or five days now with the schools opening so quick, everybody's back to school. So. Things pleased out on Monday. Uh, and then come back on Sun, Sunday, uh, let's, let's end it. The um, um, Knights Columbus. Uh. Fundraiser they had, they sold about twelve hundred fifty. They did fairly well over that. So.
Yeah.
So that's all I can, thank you.
Hey, thanks for that, Fagundes. Welcome back. So glad you've been.
Yeah, so like I said, Wednesday was a busy day for all of us with this. Um, housing, uh, I mean, the housing development, sorry, and LAPCO and K C A G and CART. Uh, the Thursday I had a conference call, well, Friday had a conference call with uh, uh, policy council to discuss our upcoming trip to Washington D.C. So I'll be talking about uh Amtrak and also the water, a little bit of water in our, in our area. And then uh Saturday attended the powwow. Uh, was a great event. I had never been there before, didn't know what to expect. Only would see a picture or two uh of Amper Sentinel. And uh, I was impressed with all the activities and how serious they think that's. We have uh people represented from every state in the union, I believe, right? Across the United States and uh, very, very impressed by it. I think, I think, well, God bless. They had the faith going, but I smacked up my own, got a little blessing in myself, you know?
Right.
So that was good. And then uh, attended one of our uh employees' sixty-fourth birthday this weekend too. So I'm not going to mention names, because looking at that means it's uh. It was a good event and uh, so I have, thank you. Well, we did, we, we must be a fill on the rest for that city county coordinating.
Thanks.
So as was said, uh, housing meeting on Wednesday and then uh Wednesday night, uh, we have several supervisors, supervisor, supervisor, supervisor. Went to the uh city council coordinating meeting with uh several account, well, all, all the cities I think were, were attended there. Uh, Nate, I don't know if Eric Nate's, yeah, Nate gave us a little presentation on the basin and the receding water and that. And then also increasing broadband. Uh, we discussed, we discussed that in the last mile and, and those things are the broad bands. Thursday uh was an airborne meeting for me for newbies. Uh, we talked about Knox and Vox and ozone and all that fun stuff. Uh, the reasons why you can see the mountains these days. Saturday was uh also several supervisors uh at the uh Santa Rosa Rancheria. And so uh, thanks to them, uh, they showed a, a, a lot of hospitality and it was, it was very impressive. Even my seven-year-old was hypnotized by it. So thanks for that.
Yeah, I was walking from the one side to the other and I had a, I had a Bloody Mary Saturday morning, right? So you can't take your Bloody Mary from the casino board to the hotel area. So I wanted to throw it out like that at a penny slot, at the side aisle at a penny slot. And I walked through a hundred ninety-six dollars. Yeah, for three minutes.
Nice.
Very impressive. I might go back. I cashed, I cashed out. I knew I, I, I don't win a lot, so I took advantage of while I was there.
Nice, that's good luck. Yes, uh, also uh Housing Authority is noted, Santa Rosa Rancheria powwow. It is an honor. We are part of the grand entry. We want to thank uh. Uh, Chairman Cisco and the tribal council for inviting us out there. Um, and then uh Thursday, uh, met at Harris Ranch with Mara Avenue and a city manager, uh, Anthony and uh. Just uh, and with Fresno County Supervisor Buddy Mendez, who gave us some time just to uh kick a discussion around early. Um, uh, also with that, uh, in regards to uh one of the uh unscheduled uh parents', uh, valley voices, if you guys want to sit down, uh. We can, we can have a meeting and I'll brief you guys on the uh ARPA events, the funding we've done, uh, all the communities we helped and that we paid off. And uh, get you a list of the ARPA committee members, which is their, their county employees. But at the end of the day, the board of supervisors, we do the votes. On where that money goes, okay? So we'll, let's, let's see if we can knock that out before next Tuesday. All right. Um, yes, ma'am. Uh, we'll turn it over to C L Martinez.
The board received two separate letters. One is regarding the Corcoran Irrigation District appointments and the other is regarding the Tulare Irrigation District appointments. For upcoming events, we have a few. The city of Hamford is hosting a free basic of starting a successful small business workshop on August twenty-ninth. From five thirty, seven thirty at the Hamford City Hall. Also save the date for the ribbon cutting of the Kings Building that's going to take place tomorrow, August thirtieth from ten AM to two PM. Ribbon cutting ceremony. Will start at ten AM and will be followed by tours with the ribbon cutting tomorrow. Please allow some time for parking because we do anticipate a lot of the members of the public attending tomorrow. Kings County is hosting a not baseball night at the Chet Chancy Stadium Friday, September eighth at five thirty PM. Ticket purchases have closed. However, those employees who need to purchase tickets. Please uh reach out to me directly and we can get you um some tickets. The Kings County Sheriff Posse will be holding their annual dinner, dance and crab feast September ninth. The event is being held at Burris Park. The city of Hamford, uh, with the Ham, Hamper Chamber of Commerce will host a free concert in the Civic Park on September twelfth and nineteenth from six to nine. And job training office will be posting in Kings County jobs there on Thursday, September fourteenth from nine AM to one PM at the Hamper Civic Center. And Kings Commission on Aging will be hosting their senior carnival of park event on Friday, September fifteenth from nine to two at Burris Park. This is a free event. And the Sarah Mooney Museum will host the Legends of Lemoore Cemetery Walk on September thirtieth from nine AM. Uh, tickets are twenty dollars and the links for Light, Pink, Passion Pigment is Tuesday, October seventeenth. For upcoming agenda items, this is for board meetings September twelfth, as there's no board meeting next week. Ag has three different agreements with the California Department of Food Agriculture. Behavioral Health has an item regarding an agreement for rant software services. CDA has a reporting of water commission meeting. Finance has rega, an item regarding the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four property taxes. And health has five items regarding the uh vaccine fee waiver agreement with Association Environmental Health Administrators and future of public health funding. Human Resources has three items regarding the suspension competition to sheriff's office. And two new job specification, one for the county health officer and one for environmental health technician. IT has an item regarding a service agreement. And lastly, public works has five items, um, some Burris Park shade structure. Um, items and the apple cut off railway improvement phase one project. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone got anything to add? All right, I think we're close enough. It's nine fifty-eight. By the time, um, we'll start the first public hearing. The folks who are going to be presenting, go ahead and take the podium.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Moon and supervisors of the board. Noel Tomlinson, planner with uh Community Development Agency. Here to present Kings County Development Code text change number six, six, eight, one, seven, A. That was introduced last Tuesday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. The Community Development Agency received private industry interest to develop and operate a commercial agricultural wood chip drying and storage facility in the rural commercial CR zone district. Which is categorized in the development code as harvesting, curing, curing, processing, packaging and shipping of agricultural projects, products. Produced on the premises as part of an agricultural operation. Currently, this type of use is not allowed in the rural commercial CR zone district. Development code article six for a commercial zone districts does state that all uses listed in the light industrial IL zone district that require a site and review. Are allowable, allowable in the rural commercial zone district, subject to the approval of a site and review. However, harvesting, curing, processing, packaging and shipping of agricultural products is a permitted by right use in the IL zone district, so it does not qualify for the CR zone district through this. The development code text teams would amend article six so that IL uses that are permitted by right would also be allowable in the CR zone district, subject to the approval of a site and review zone. Since lightened, light industrial uses that require a site and review are already allowable in the CR zone district, subject to a site and review. Then allowing IL permitted by right uses in the CR zone district, subject to approval of a site and review will create consistency in the Kings County Development Code. Because these uses are generally less impactful than what is already allowable. These changes will remain consistent with the Kings County General Plans. The approval of development code text change number six, six, eight, one, seven, A is exempt from sequel review pursuant to section one, five, zero, six, one, V three. Of the sequel guidelines, which states that a project is exempt from sequel if the activity is covered by the general rule that sequel only applies to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. We can find that the act of adopting a development code text change does not have a significant effect on the environment. And none of the special circumstances listed in section one, five, three, zero, zero point two apply to the act of adopting a development code text change. The Kings County Plan Commission received a staff report and conducted a public hearing on July third, twenty twenty-three. An adopted resolution number twenty-three O two recommending that the board adopt development code text change number six, six, eight, one, seven, A in the public interest. If approved, this development code text change will take effect thirty days following adoption. Staff recommends conducting a public meeting. Find that development code text change number six, six, eight, one, seven, A is exempt from sequel review pursuant to sequel guideline section one, five, zero, six, one. And that section one, five, three, zero, zero point two does not apply. Find that development code text change number six, six, eight, one, seven, A is consistent with the policies of the twenty thirty-five Kings County General Plan. Adopt and waive the second reading of an ordinance approving the development code text change number six, six, eight, one, seven, A. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Go to clerk to the board. Is there any correspondence?
I have not received any written correspondence and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Okay, anyone in the chambers? Thank you. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, directors. Um, Christine Chavez, I am the senior planner with PK and I am here to speak in um support of the ordinance modification. Um, I am representing the wonderful group and I think that this ordinance change will help with sustainable ad production in Kings County. And um, we are here to fully support it and I'm here with the confession to people.
Thank you, appreciate you. Anybody else in the chambers? Okay, any questions um from the board? Okay, CNN, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back for action.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve as presented and waive of the second reading. And uh. And approve the development code text change number six, six, eight, point, one, seven, A.
Thanks, you love it. Motion by Verbin. Second by Robinson, Madam Clerk.
Vern Nevs.
Yeah.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Deb Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item passes five in favor. Uh, second of three public hearings. Uh, also comes to you Development Agency who will be presenting during the presentation on this one. Morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Victor Hernandez here for the second week, uh, planner with the Community Development Agency. Presenting Kings County Development Code Text Change Number six, six, eight, point, one, seven, V. The Kings County Community Development Agency has the responsibility to administer and maintain the Kings County Development Code. As state laws are created and or amended, there are provisions in the Development Code that need to be updated to be consistent with state law. The proposed Development Code amendments to various sections of articles five, seven, twelve and twenty-five of the Kings County Development Code addresses states amendments. To accessory dwelling unit law. As presented at, at last week's board meeting. The proposed amendments would permit accessory dwelling units in both the residential and mixed-use zone districts. Additionally, junior accessory dwelling units would also be permitted in the residential and mixed-use zone district in a similar, similar manner as accessory dwelling unit. Both types of ADUs would also be permitted without a zoning permit. The proposed changes will remain consistent with the goals and object, objectives of the twenty thirty-five Kings County General Plan. The approval of development code text change number six, six, eight, point, one, seven, V is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act review or sequel review. Pursuant to section one, five, oh, six, one, V three of the sequel guidelines, which states that a project is exempt from sequel. If the activity is covered by the general rule that sequel only applies to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. We can find that the changes in the Development Code are technical. Changes concerning general policy for the implementation of the zoning regulations. And there is no possibility that these changes will have a significant effect on the environment by the act of adopting the Development Code text change. For the same reason, none of the circumstances in sequel guidelines section one, five, three, zero, zero point two. Apply to the act of adopting of Development Code text change. Development Code text change six, six, eight, one, seven, V was presented to the Kings County Planning Commission. Who received a staff report and conducted a public hearing on July third, twenty twenty-three. The planning commission voted and adopted resolution number twenty-three dash O three. Recommending that the board of supervisors adopt Development Code text change number six, six, eight, point, one, seven, V in the public interest. If approved, this Development Code text change will take effect thirty days following adoption. With that, staff recommends that the board hold a public hearing. Find that Development Code text change number six, six, eight, one, seven, V is exempt from sequel review pursuant to sequel guideline section one, five, zero, six, one. And that section one, five, three, zero, zero point two does not apply. Find that Development Code text change six, six, eight, one, seven, V is consistent with the policies of the twenty thirty-five Kings County General Plan. And adopt and waive the second reading of an ordinance approving the Development Code text change six, six, eight, one, seven, V. That concludes my presentation unless there are any questions.
Thank you. And but, okay, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
I have received no written correspondence and it doesn't seem anyone online. Hands for hand raised.
Thank you. Any uh comment from the public on this matter? Okay, any um questions from board?
I, I have one question. So did I hear you say no permit was needed?
No zoning permit.
But that's no zoning.
No zoning permit.
Okay, but we do have permits for sewer water and uh, sewer water and.
Depending on where they're located. If they're, you know, in a uh, community service district, they just still need like wheel silver.
Okay. I heard no permit. I was like, right on.
No zoning. That was no zoning permit.
That was for a swap meet.
I was thinking about, guess my shop today. Guess you.
All right, any other questions from board? We will close the public hearing and bring it back for action to the board.
There's no question or comment. All move as presented on um. And waive the second reading on Development Code text change number six, six, eight, point, one, seven, B.
Actually, love for good. If we can get a second. Second. Uh, motion by Verbin, second by Fagundes, Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yeah.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Deb Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Time passes five in favor. Thanks, sir.
I would, before we finally close that matter, I'd like to see clarification because the way I understood your motion, it was to waive the second meeting. Um, it was, did your motion also include to find that sequel did not apply? And to um adopt the protection?
Yes, I did not say that, but I, that's what I meant.
Is that everybody's consensus at the end?
Yeah, uh, the motion, he said, uh.
Thank you.
As presented.
Thank you.
Thank you, though.
Oh, it's crazy. Always want to keep it crazy.
Attorney, always want to keep it free.
Okay, thank you. Last public hearing of the day also comes from King Development Agency. Start presentation. Morning.
Good morning, Chair members of the board. Alex Hernandez, King Development Agency. Reporting this morning with the twenty twenty CCGV one grant closeout report. Back in May of twenty twenty-one, the county received a grant award of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand and nine dollars from the Department of Housing and Community Development. This program was to reduce provide low, moderate income clients or households that have been financially impacted as a direct result of the coronavirus pandemic. This provided emergency mortgages, rent or utility assistance for the purpose of preventing eviction or a cutoff of utility services, also known as subsistence payments. The grant budget included a hundred and twenty-six thousand, a hundred and thirty-one dollars for subsistence payments and ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars for general administration of the grant. County staff, along with South Health Enterprises, administered this grant. The county processed forty-seven applications and received forty-three households and over seventy individuals. Applications consisted of various requests, subsistence payments, including mortgage, rent and utility assistance. The maximum assistance allowed was five thousand dollars per household. The program paid approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars in rent, seven thousand dollars in mortgages, twenty thousand dollars in electricity, four thousand dollars in natural gas and approximately thirteen thousand dollars for services provided by community services district. So the county was able to expend all but three hundred and ninety-eight dollars in this grant. Overall, a very successful program. Staff does recommend that there's more conduct public hearing to provide citizens with an opportunity to make their comments known regarding the county's twenty twenty Community Development Block Grant C D one accomplishments. And authorized Community Development Agency Director has signed and submitted documents required to close out the grant with Department of Housing and Community Development. That does conclude my report and if there are any questions.
Any questions? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
I have received no written correspondence and no online. Has their hand raised?
Members of the public? Bring it to the board for queue questions, any questions?
All approved as presented. There's no question, comments, and thank you. Good progress.
You helped forty-seven people at five thousand a pot?
Approximately, yeah. Some applications vary. So some were less than five thousand, the maximum, the others five thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, forty-seven applications, forty-three households, over seventy individuals.
That's, that's good work. So you brought it down to funds down to zero?
Three hundred and ninety-eight dollars would be decent numbers.
Wow. Good work, good work. Appreciate that.
That won't cover my direct TV though.
When's the next competitive opportunities for CCG?
Right now, we currently have a homeowner chip assistance program currently active. We have been notified that we will be awarded the grant for the Gettleman City curb dedicated sidewalks, approximately six hundred thousand dollars for that. And then we've also been notified that we will be awarded a fire engine for Gettleman City as well. So those applications are in the works. The state has told us that they will be awarded. We're just waiting for final agreement.
Good work. Thank you, guys. Anything else from the board? We'll close the public hearing and bring it back for action. We had a motion by Verben, a second by Robinson. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yeah.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Deb Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Thank you. Good work, everybody. Okay, that takes us to, the board will go into closed session for some items that are listed on the agenda and will stand adjourns Tuesday, next Tuesday, September fifth, as mentioned, has been canceled due to Labor Day holiday. And we'll be back Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, nine AM, right here. Thank you.